Well, welcome, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Environmental Planning Commission meeting of April 19th, 2017. Can we start with a roll call?
Commissioner Bay. Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Commissioner Collins.
Here.
Mr. Cox.
Here.
Mr. Conery.
Here.
Vice Chair Haymire will be a few minutes late. Chair Scarborough.
Here.
Okay, on the agenda tonight, we have no minutes approval. We do have, we're now moving to the oral communication to the public. So this is your opportunity, if you would like to address the planning commission on anything that is not on the agenda tonight, this is your time. Do we have anybody who wants to speak on something not on the agenda? Okay, seeing nobody, we will go to our first study session. Item 5.1, 700 and 800 East Middlefield Road and 1100 West Mott Avenue. So I believe we have a staff report and then a report from the, or a presentation from the applicant as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, so, good evening, commissioners. The item before you is proposed LinkedIn campus redevelopment at the addresses that Commissioner Scarborough just identified. So the project site is located on the eastern edge of the city, abutting the city of Sunnyvale. It's approximately 28 acres, made up of three parcels that currently contain five buildings. The site has a current zoning designation of ML, which is our limited industrial district, as well as a general plan land use designation of high intensity office, which allows up to 1.0 FAR and up to eight stories for highly sustainable transit-oriented development. In terms of land uses surrounding the project site, it is predominantly surrounded by office development in Mountain View. On the eastern side, in the city of Sunnyvale, are apartment and condominium properties along that eastern edge. These properties are roughly set back approximately 10 to 75 feet from the property line. And the site is also located within kind of the airport influence area for the Moffett Field Airport. The site does have a well-known history. I'm not going to repeat it in this presentation as it was described pretty in detail in staff report, but I will touch base on kind of the current development activity that's been happening. In 2015, the zoning administrator approved a proposal by Google to essentially remove surface parking in up to 44 heritage trees, kind of in the center of the site, surrounding these four buildings. And this work is under construction today. It is, with the land swap that occurred between Google and LinkedIn, the campus construction has been taken over and pursued by LinkedIn to complete that work. It's anticipated to be completed this summer, and they will occupy the site once it's completed. So the proposed work is by LinkedIn, includes basically the retention of the three existing buildings in the center of the site, along with the site work that's near completion today. The new components of the project would include three new six-story buildings, which you see here, as well as two six-level parking garages with one level below grade and five levels above grade. The project also includes essentially removing all of the surface parking on the site and converting that to landscaped area. The project also includes new circulation. Primarily, the site would be served by a new perimeter drive aisle that would connect the main street frontages with access to the new proposed parking garages. Additionally, the loading zone primarily would be served along the frontage road here as well. The project is also proposed to be LEED Platinum. That includes photovoltaics that they're proposing along the rooftops of the garages. Additionally, an interesting component of this project is this idea of using natural sunlight to light the interior of the office spaces, which speaks to some of the design of the project, as well as some of the existing site improvements that are currently being constructed include reclaiming some of the HVAC condensation to irrigate the landscaping. Generally speaking, I'll leave it to the project architect to describe the components of the design, but I did want to include some renderings here, speaking to the fact that the six-story design will primarily have a two-story element that's wider, wider footprint than the upper floors, which would be recessed. And then, the project does include a proposal for a large open area along Middlefield Road, as well as some recreational space along Mott Avenue. In terms of trees, the existing site has approximately 700 trees, 270 of which are heritage trees. As part of the project, I've kind of bolded here the footprints of the new structures, where trees are currently located, as well as, in red here are where some new circulation components of the project are in conflict with some of the existing trees, which may be proposed for removal. So in total, it's estimated that 180 trees would need to be removed as part of this project, which is roughly 25 percent, 75 of which are heritage trees. The applicant has proposed replanting at a ratio of 3 to 1 for every heritage tree removed, which would result in a minimum of 225 new trees. Staff thinks because of the large amount of landscaped open area, that additional trees could be looked at. The project is proposed to be constructed over a four-year timeline. They are, LinkedIn is proposing to maintain occupancy of the site during construction. Because of this timeline, the applicant is requesting a development agreement, which does essentially extend the entitlement approval, which for the city is two years. And as part of that process, it does require them to consider providing community benefits. The staff report provided an overview of some of the primary project constraints that really impact the proposed design and site layout. I won't go into detail here, but primarily, it's focused on the fact that it's near an airport, the fact that there are existing buildings on site that they are retaining, that LinkedIn is proposing to maintain occupancy of the site throughout construction, and that the site has a unique shape with multiple street frontages. The last part of the project that I wanted to touch base on is the fact that it is located in the East Wisman Precise Plan area, which is a new zoning that is currently in development for this area. Because it's located in the Precise Plan area, the intent is for this process, the review of this project, to be iterative. Staff does intend for the project to be compliant with the Precise Plan. What that means is that the project is kind of going through the process of review at the same time the Precise Plan is being developed. So the direction that we have at this point is really based on the visioning input we've gotten for the East Wisman Precise Plan over the last year. So the six or five elements identified here is really the starting point that staff has utilized. Getting into the specific questions posed to EPC tonight, the first component of this project is the city's affordable housing ordinance. The project is required to provide a housing impact fee, which is based on all net new commercial square footage built, and goes towards construction of affordable housing in the city. With the current fee rate of $25 per square foot, the project is estimated to be required to provide $15.5 million. In terms of implementing the use of these fees, the ordinance allows for a fee collection, which is the predominant way that the city, that projects comply with this ordinance. Additionally, and developer can propose to provide land dedicated for the purpose of affordable housing, or can construct units, and staff provided some examples in the staff report. The third is an option to kind of look at alternatives, ways that would still comply that council can consider. So the first question posed to EPC tonight is really whether the applicant and staff should study direct contribution alternatives for the project to meet the city's affordable housing ordinance requirements. The applicant has shown an interest of trying to find more creative ways to implement the city's affordable housing ordinance in a more streamlined and quicker fashion. In terms of building heights, the project is proposing six-story building heights for the office components, and then up to five levels for the parking structure. These heights are consistent with the heights discussed as part of the East Wisman Precise Plan process. I will say, in general, one of the main interests for allowing additional height is this interest of having greater open area in project sites. The second component is really this question about setbacks. As part of a P District project, the city ultimately has to adopt site-specific development standards. So this question is really getting to, towards what maybe those site-specific development standards should be for this project. Right now, staff is proposing, in accordance with the city of Sunnyvale's regulations, to consider a 100-foot minimum setback between the building face of an office building to the face of the nearest residential building. The second part is for parking structures to consider a one-foot to one-foot height-to- setback ratio for buildings against, for parking structures against a residential shared property line. This is essentially from the El Camino Real Precise Plan. It's also referred to as a 45-degree angle. In terms of setbacks, staff feels it's appropriate, because of the nature of this site, to allow for enough setback for a landscape buffer and some other amenities. So the question, question two for EPC is really two parts. One, are six-story building and five-level parking structure heights appropriate for the project? And B is a one-to-one height-to-setback ratio for parking structures along the shared residential property line, and a minimum 100-foot setback between office and residential buildings appropriate for the project? The next question is really about street setbacks. The two concerns were, in reviewing this project, staff raised two concerns in the staff report, really oriented around the parking structure that's proposed along Middlefield Road. It's currently shown to have a 21-foot setback from the property line along Middlefield Road. And then, for the building office, Building 3 proposed along the frontage road against 237 is proposed to have a 20-foot setback at one particular point. Both of these setbacks, once you start looking at the implementation of new sidewalks or new bike lane improvements, you start getting closer potentially to the building face when you're along the sidewalks. So staff is, does believe that there are alternatives that could be looked at, or should be studied further. So the question really before EPC is whether the applicant should consider those alternative designs for these two particular components of the project from the public streets. For parking, the project currently is proposing to park at a ratio consistent with the North Bay Shore Precise Plan. This is a ratio that is less than the city's standard zoning ordinance requirement for office. I think the staff report said 18 percent. It's actually closer to 19 percent of a reduction, if you look comparing the two. Staff is supportive of the reduced parking because of the proximity of being a quarter-mile to the Middlefield VTA Light Rail Station. And as part of this project, since there is 3,000 square feet of retail that is also proposed as part of this project, would look at shared parking and study that scenario for a shared campus setting. And then additionally, the site, project is required to have a transportation demand management trip reduction target. Staff believes, while we don't have one yet for the East Wisman Precise Plan, we do believe that the applicant will be required to do at least 20 percent trip reduction, which is consistent with other office developments in East Wisman, but it could potentially be more. So the question is for EPC is whether the parking ratio that is being proposed by the applicant is really appropriate, or if EPC wants to consider an alternative. For pedestrian and bicycle improvements, in reviewing the project with planning and public work staff, as well as taking into consideration some of the feedback and information that we've gotten through the East Wisman Precise Plan process, staff really took a hard look at this site to see if there's ways to consider greater pedestrian and bicycle access, primarily through the site, since it is such a large site, and it is kind of right at the Sunnyvale City, Mountain View limit. Primarily, the identified improvements include essentially bike, on-street bike improvements, as well as sidewalk improvements along all three frontages, as well as two cycle tracks. This is intended to be separated, cycle tracks. One would be potentially along the western edge here, and one would be along the eastern edge. And then, lastly, multi-use public paths through the site, primarily allowing users to go along Middlefield from the VTA station and cut through the site in some fashion, as well as allowing potentially coming up Bernardo Avenue, and kind of into the site entrance, and cutting through the site as well. So with these identified improvements, staff is really asking if EPC agrees with these or if additional connections are desired. And then, lastly, for community benefits, the project is required to provide community benefits primarily for two components of the project. First, it is a gatekeeper project and is within a Precise Plan area, so essentially this idea of the bonus FAR where community benefits are required, and other precise plans are thought to be happening for East Wisman Precise Plan as well, and we will talk about that further in the Precise Plan process. The other component is also the development agreement. As part of that process, in exchange for the applicant being allowed to have potentially an extended timeline to develop the project, they are required to provide a community benefit. Primarily, the intent of a community benefit is to serve a greater need beyond just the project users. I'll just briefly talk through these three community benefits that staff identified in the staff report. The first is really the 237 Mott Avenue undercrossing. This is really a mega-intersection. It has essentially three intersections in one. This image here is really the best image that we have at this point of this crossing. It's primarily, or this is interim improvements that are going to be going in place from the 580 Clyde Avenue Office Project that was approved within the last couple of years. Staff feels like the need for pedestrian and bicycle access through this area is much greater than what is going to be done with this installation. Right now, a bicyclist cannot cross this intersection during the signal length. It's pretty difficult. So potentially, an option is to consider looking at and funding design and construction of those improvements. Another community benefit consideration is for this Bernardo Avenue undercrossing. So this is an undercrossing that actually the city of Sunnyvale is pursuing and is currently in the process of starting to design it. Essentially, it would allow for bicyclists and pedestrians through an underground tunnel to go under the Caltrain, so from Evelyn Avenue on Bernardo, they could go under the Caltrain tracks. They would pop back up at grade on Central Expressway, and at this point, they would just cross at grade at Central Expressway. As part of the Precise Plan process, there is an interest to look at how this crossing could be improved, whether it's expanding what Sunnyvale's doing, or other alternatives to be considered. So there is the potential for the applicant to look at ways to help us either fund design or study potential improvements here. And then, lastly, the third option is this idea of the open area. So this open area is currently proposed by LinkedIn to serve, you know, the campus needs, and is really oriented towards the public to be accessible. I think staff's question is really whether it should be more formally public in some fashion, and staff really sees this as a great opportunity potentially to have some programmable space that could be used for particularly the new East Wisman Precise Plan neighborhood, for this area south of 237. Since residential land uses are not being considered south of 237 in the Precise Plan, this might be a great opportunity to get a sizable open area that could be used for neighborhood functions. So as part of these community benefits, staff is really asking if EPC could prioritize them in terms of strongest preference for the applicant to pursue, and/or whether EPC had other suggestions for community benefits. In terms of next steps, after tonight's meeting, with EPC's feedback, this project will go to council on the second for a study session to get council's input and direction, and then following that, the project will begin the formal development review process, which includes neighborhood outreach, design review, and environmental review. That concludes staff's presentation, and the applicant also has a presentation. Do you want to start getting ready?
Hi, I'm Jim Morgensen. I'm VP of Workplace at LinkedIn. I think most of you guys have met me over the years here, so thank you for, Mr., for having us tonight and presenting our project. Lindsay kind of took you through, I think, most of all the stuff that really what we've done. I think you understand the genesis of this project. This originally started with a land swap with Google. We did that swap so that we could actually consolidate our offices and our people in one general area versus having people spread out throughout Mountain View and Sunnyvale. For our benefits, it actually worked incredibly well, and now we'd like to take the next stage of that, which is really develop our corporate headquarters and bring headquarters back to Mountain View, which is currently is in Sunnyvale. You're going to see tonight the presentation that was delivered in February in terms of just of the staff, and it's evolved a little bit since then, but David Sappelbaro will take you through that, so I'm going to not talk about any of the site and stuff. Just a couple of things I do want to mention is, in the staff report, we're pretty well comfortable with what the staff is suggesting in terms of community benefits and the use of the housing impact fee. We really need your guys' help on prioritizing that and the kinds of things that you're looking for, so we really are looking for some feedback on that from you guys. I want to take you through the features of the project. Lindsay already did, and you already saw how all of this stuff. We think is kind of meeting with kind of the intent of where the East Wisman Precise Plan is going. We tried very much to keep the open spaces as a big deal as part of the project. That works actually very well for us, but it also works as David will show you, to give access from Middlefield into the project, so it actually makes it larger, and we think it gives us what we call a better campus feeling, and it just makes a better use of what we think the open space is. So that's it. I'm going to introduce David, and he's going to take you through the project.
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, my name is David Sappelbaro. I'm a principal and partner with Studio's Architecture. Today, I think we're really here to hear from you, EPC, on your reaction. We know you've been briefed on the project. I don't want to repeat it. I only have a presentation. I've got 14 slides. I can do that in the seven minutes that she's allocated me. But before we go there, I'd like to introduce our team. I've got a couple of my fellow architects here from Studios, John and Peter, just so you know who's in the room here. Also, we've got our illustrious project manager, Don Young, who's leading us through the entitlements, along with our land use attorney, Mitch Menzner. And then, as Jim pointed out, we've got the great LinkedIn team of Katie Farick, I think you know, Katie, Brett Hotop, Cindy McGill, and I think there's a couple other new people here. So we've got our client, who has inspired us, has motivated us, and has really put a great project, we think, together for us to work on. We've been working on it for a while now, but I think if we start with the first slide, this is a slide we were given when we were handed this project, so this is Middlefield, and we kind of rallied around this because, look at the trees. I mean, the wonderful trees that are there became our rallying point. I mean, a lot of issues, a lot of projects. This isn't a project where we wiped it clean and started and built a brand-new building that's just suited LinkedIn. You know, we believe our best projects emanate from what the site is presenting to us, and now we can take advantage of that. So our theme throughout is about the trees. You'll notice the scale of the trees. Those are two-story buildings. The trees are taller than the buildings right now, and we're salvaging as many as we can. I want to direct your attention to this site. It's still, as you can see, don't be alarmed, this is the before model. We have another model underneath this that will show you. But the sea of asphalt, I mean, the previous project, they were able to carve out the center, and we've kind of capitalized on that and extended the network through there, but created a heart to the campus. We really feel, you know, taking advantage of the existing form and character of the project, the trees. You know, I like to say sometimes when I think about Mountain View, I think about trees, and I think the trees are really something we capitalize on. This slide here, down here on this end, is the south or east portion where the, excuse me, where the fence, the sound wall is against the residential end on Sunnyvale. You can see the amount of greenery. This is probably the worst condition right now, where there are no trees on our property, but down here, it's a, it's a very thick landscape buffer. We can go to the next slide. I think you all know we're part of the East Wisman Plan, and our project is in a higher density, but we just want to show you, this is some context. These are the other LinkedIn holdings in Sunnyvale. So you can see, it did work out that there is, there could be a connection from their existing buildings to this campus, and trying to create this as the headquarters really does work for them. So really trying to take advantage of this site. To the next one. But really, the insight I want to give you in these 14 slides are really not what we did, but how we got there. Okay, so the existing site really shows the three buildings as we renovated them. The new central landscaped area, and the two existing buildings that, you know, are destined, if this project's approved, to be removed and replaced with additional buildings. But this diagram shows you what we were given to work with. At first, when they gave us this project, I said, oh, great, we have a site, but it's got a hole right in the middle. So the only place we could develop was around the perimeter, the orange areas, and that's how we kind of rallied around this network and started extending it out. Let's go to the next one. I think we did the analysis. We always like to start with analysis, and it was all about how do we fit into the community? How do we fit into the transportation ideas that are being promoted? How does the bike and pedestrian fit into the community? And we tried to get a scale, the light rail vehicle stop is up here, and really, the connection from this corner into our site was important. Next one shows the constraints that were mentioned. Not only did we have physical constraint, we had a lot of utility constraints. These are city utilities that run right through the site that we've got to relocate and deal with, and we've been able to deal with that. The influence of the airport was another big thing that we had to deal with, but we're complying. We asked for no variances. We were complying with everything that the site is presenting to us. To the next one. I think the insight we want to show you is, we did look at alternatives. This is the way we start a project, and it's a real quick method of massing. The yellow represents parking. The blue represents new building. The white represents the existing. So these are modules of 25,000 square feet. These are modules of about 80 to 100 cars. So right away, we saw, if we wanted to get to the density we were playing with, we had to look at how do we situate, you know, parking, new buildings, existing buildings. I won't bore you with all the things we went through, but we quickly went through it, and this is the project we wanted to build here, but I don't think anybody would approve that one. Let's go to the next slide, because this is the final four here that we came up with, and some alternatives that we really went to. Up on this, can't get this thing going, this left-hand side, you can see, in one case, we demolished an existing building and created a new building here, to see what we gained from that. We didn't think we gained much by eliminating 150,000 square feet and building another 250,000 square feet. So we kept the three buildings. We started liking the situation of the parking tucked along the long side here. We started looking at the front area. You can see, we had buildings up on the front here at first, trying to see what that did, and we really came back to our guiding principles about open space. We started decreasing that building in front. We ultimately ended up really rallying around this large open space in the front. But also, what we did was, this was more at a 1.0 FAR. We started reducing square footage. So we've reduced, we've come down from the maximum we assumed, because we just felt the fit was going to be better, and we were going to be able to get more open space, especially this front door to the long side of the site, the Middlefield site. We situated the buildings, the higher density, along the freeway side, and really tried to make the connections through the site and extending the network out to the Middlefield site. So this is where we're ending up. This was an earlier version, but that's how we arrived at some of our principles. The next one, in the same time, we were really developing our guiding principles, and we had been listening to the study sessions that have been going on on the East Wisman Precise Plan, tried to rally around them, and a lot of them was about landscape, open space, trees, connectivity, and bicyclists and pedestrians. So I think that was our guiding, you know, guiding force for our situation, the higher intensity office placed along the freeways, and then the more enhanced ecosystem with the natural landscape. You notice, we've gotten rid of all the asphalt, pretty much, and I'm going to ask my fellow architects to do the big reveal here, because we've got the final model, or at least the model here that we wanted to, then you just ask our tool to start the discussion with you. So what we have here is... So what we have here is, I think it's oriented the same way. The front, the front open space area, you can see, to Middlefield, and the buildings along the freeway. But the big key, let's go to the next thing, is these six principles that we developed. You know, we knew we had to keep the existing buildings, because, you know, recycling and reusing these buildings is the best use of our resources, not wasting what was already done there. We knew we, you know, most tech companies want large footprinted buildings. You know, that's why a lot of them are building the mega buildings and like to get all their people together. LinkedIn still wanted a campus. They still wanted a verdant exterior campus. They didn't want the mega building. So we did want to give them a large enough floor plate, so these lower two-story buildings, two-story elements are larger footprints. So they essentially are connected to the existing buildings and provide that large footprint on the lower two floors. But what we did then is also locate the parking structures along the edge so that we could maximize our open space and landscape. There are no, there are pretty much no surface parking anymore, if you see the model. We then said we could utilize these large footprints as more terraces for more outdoor space for LinkedIn, and then we made a conscious decision to go to a narrow footprint on the upper floors, from floors three to six. These floors are 75 feet wide. A typical building is 120 feet. If you take a standard spec building, 45 feet, 35 feet, 45 feet for leasing devs. So the narrow footprint is more like a European model, where access to natural light is maximized, and we are able to convince LinkedIn that it worked for their planning module, and the narrow footprints gave us the ability to sculpt it, to still allow access to light. We angled these buildings, so we had not a wall along the freeway, but view corridors and access into, into the site. And finally, the pedestrians circulate and bicycle circulation was a big deal to us, and I think you'll see the network of those things happening. So these are my last few slides. I think the, we have a number of exhibits. Next slide. We have another number of exhibits for vehicles. Next one. Our access, you can see what we are adding now is another major bike path from Middlefield to LinkedIn. So we're still listening to comments, we're still incorporating some ideas and maximizing these. My final slide, I think, is really about the square footage. You can see, we developed it, this is a simplified version of what you have. This graph really shows it clearly. We were assuming the maximum FAR was 1.0, which would have been more like a 1,000,000, 1,200,000 square feet. The existing buildings, you can see the math here, 315,000. The two buildings to be demolished, 151,000. Our net add is really the 612,000. Okay, net after you take away the 315 and the 151. Total new building area, 763. Our total proposed square footage is not the 1.2, but the 1,078,000. So our proposed FAR, sorry, that should be a D there, is at .86. We're below the 1.0. Right? Next slide. I think the lot coverage, you can see our area, our landscape and open space right now is at 54%. You add just the paved areas, and we're more at 64%, or, yeah, 64%, but building footprints only 36%. So the open space, again, is something we're able to capitalize on, and that's not even adding the rooftop open space technically. The final slide, I think, you know, we're really excited about this front area, the front space that really embraces Middlefield and really extends a welcoming gesture out to the street, out to Middlefield in the community, and we're able to salvage a number of large heritage trees on the front. Right now, you look at the site, you don't really see the buildings, but you'll see these buildings. These are looked at to be, you know, fairly light, glassy buildings, but the solid base of the two stories, we have that transitional space. But I think you see we're expressing things like stairs and really getting a transparency to the buildings so you can see activity. This is the last slide. The model is really what, I think the last slide is the model. Yeah, okay, I'm done. The last slide is the model, and I think we can direct our questions, and I can explain things, given the model. That make sense? And we have some other exhibits that we could pull up at any time and show you how we address things. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, what we'll do is, we will take questions from commissioners, then questions and comments from the public, but before we do that, I'd like to get a show of hands of all the commissioners who have spoken with the applicant. All right, so I'm the odd one out. Okay, well, do we have commissioner questions? Mr. Cox?
Yes, so here, I'm looking at a row of trees that you have there against the residential area. Are those all new trees to be planted?
A lot, most of them are. There's an existing row of trees along this edge that are fairly dense. We represent that there is a very dense green buffer that we're going to capitalize on. The growth trees along the inner portion here are new trees. Right now, there's trees, there's landscape, and then parking, and then the road. We're getting rid of all that parking, 18 feet of parking against that buffer, so we have room for parking. But with the introduction of a bike path, we're going to have to use some of that area.
So right now, the height of the existing trees, how does that compare against the height of the parking garage that you got there?
So if you look at the, at one slide, that second slide, the second slide in our presentation, add that photo. This one? Lindsay? Yep. So our parking structures are essentially like four-story buildings. You know, they're shorter than a real building, parking structure. So this is two stories, three stories, four stories would be up here, so it's right at the top of the trees. And now, if there's a section cut, these balconies here, they're not able to look, they're looking up through the trees, not really seeing the parking structure. You'd have to be down the road outside to really see over the top.
Is it fair to say that the current trees after the parking structure is built provide, you know, a moderate amount of shielding?
That is what-
For the residential, and then eventually, you know, I mean, it will be a good shielding because it's a pretty thick-
That is what our hope was. That's why when we saw these trees and the buffer there, we thought we need to capitalize on that, and we thought, you know, that's where we can really provide a landscape framework. Since then, the attitude of providing the bike and the separated walk, you know, that's going to be a trade-off, and that's what we're going to study next. How does it impact these trees? But you know, besides the trees on our property, there are trees on the other property that add to that buffer.
Okay. So now, let me ask you about like that building that you have that's-
This one here?
Close to the residential, the one next to it. Okay? No, no, the taller ones. Okay, so I'm trying to talk about the residential impact.
Right.
One of the things I'm, it looks kind of like open and glassy, and I'm wondering, is it going to be lit at night?
Well, given energy standards and energy savings, they tend to go off. You know, they're automatically. But one thing I want to point out is, we had some other, you know, versions where we had the building angled the other way. You can see what we consciously done is tried to orient the small end of the building towards the residence rather than the long end of the building. You know, we really tried to be sensitive to, you know, overlooking into that with the office buildings. This is the only place that occurs, you know, in our, in our buildings.
And I'm just, sorry, I want to interject real quick. So we, as part of the development review process, we do look at photometric impacts, so that would also be looked at and studied as part of the project.
Yeah, my main concern was about-
Is light pollution.
The light pollution at night, okay.
Yeah.
So let me ask you a little bit about the programmed open space area. Is there any similar kind of space right now in City Mountain View?
So we do have spaces in Mountain View, sorry, let me just edit this slide real quick. Oh, why not? Okay. So there are some spaces in Mountain View that are currently privately owned and have public access easements or other, you know, public access agreements over them. One of the most recent projects where this was done is Charleston East, or the Google building that was approved by council recently, in North Bay Shore.
But it's an approval, it isn't actually built yet, right?
Correct.
Okay. And so, let me try to understand a little bit more about how that works. I mean, is there, since it's privately owned but publicly accessible, I mean, are there liability issues? Like, somebody breaks his ankle on there, what happens?
So that would be, if EPC and council are interested in staff and the applicant pursuing that, we would look at the design and legal framework of how that would work.
Okay, okay.
There is another good example, I believe, San Antonio Phase Two.
Okay.
Old Plaza in the center.
Ah, okay.
This is privately owned, but it does have public access easements.
The dog park, yeah.
And the dog park as well.
Oh, okay. So like the dog park at San Antonio, I mean, do you have to be a resident there to use the dog park, or?
No, anyone could use it.
And the same with the Phase Two common space, that'll all be open.
Okay. So there's some common there. Okay. In terms of the actual programming on it, is, so the idea would be that it's open to the public, even if it isn't programmed for a specific event, like, you know, you mentioned the idea in the staff report, of a farmer's market or something. Like, I mean, if like, let's say, there was nothing going on there on a Saturday, would it be open to the public for kids who wanted to kick a soccer ball around? Or would you need to be permission granted to do this?
Yeah. Well, I, you know, I haven't really thought about much.
Okay.
We're not close to any reasonable idea on it.
So I'm giving you some things to think about when we talk about it.
Yeah. No, that's good.
Okay.
I guess the way I think about it is that ideally, we don't want a closed campus, so years ago, we built very closed campuses. We're trying to avoid doing that. We do want something that is open. We're not going to like have security guards that go kick people off if they want to buy access. But it's, you know, it's got to be safe, and it's got to be, it's not skateboarding and painting stuff and, you know, doing things they shouldn't be doing. So we got to be careful about that. But I don't, you know, I think from a youth point of view, we certainly can figure it out, figure out the right way to manage it.
Okay.
And I think in terms of the community benefit, this city would expect it to have a fair amount of openness to the public.
Okay.
You know, so that it feels generally like it's, you know, a public space, which would be similar to other situations which we-
Okay, in that sense, it would then qualify as part of the community benefit.
I would say, I mean, this is still, we're in the very early stages, and we're still, you know, formulating.
But that's, that's possible for discussion.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, the intent is, staff sees this as a potential opportunity for public events to happen here in a more formal manner.
So, I mean, you mentioned a farmer's market, and I just wanted to ask, the idea isn't that you're closing the one downtown, is it?
No.
Okay, I know that's a leading question, I'm sorry. Okay.
That would be war.
Well, I know that there's a big incentive to keep building out all those spaces, you know. Anyway, that's off-topic. With regards to, so we've heard some things about, you know, the TMA and all that, and so I remember when I first came on commission four years ago, we went to Samsung Building, and we were told that, you know, that there was going to be a follow-up on that. Do we have the follow-up yet?
Yes.
And how's it working out?
They're actually exceeding the 20% trip reduction.
Oh, okay.
So they're doing pretty good.
Okay.
So that's the first monitoring report that we've gotten, since they're, they've been fully occupied for over a year now. So we did just recently receive that report, and they are meeting or exceeding the expectation.
Well, congratulations on that. I'm going to ask the Lisa Manicheck question. I didn't quite get it on the thing, but is the, are, were the parking structures included in the FAR?
No.
Ah, okay. Let's see. So how, ah, another question about the rental, oh, no, the housing impact fee. Is the way the housing impact fee set up is that it is the intent of that, that the monies are used exclusively to purchase BMR housing?
It's actually primarily used for what are referred to as NOFA projects, or Notice of Funding Availability. It's where the city does, essentially releases information about available funds for developers, for affordable housing developers to come with proposals to develop affordable housing projects. So it's new construction typically. I do believe-
Okay, but it is, it is for housing, it's not-
Correct, directly related to housing.
-paid for something else like parks or, or, you know, staff to help people find housing.
No.
It has to go to board.
Okay. And I just a question back to LinkedIn then. So what's LinkedIn's specific desire to go to, go the extra mile beyond just writing the check? I mean, you know, and exploring other alternatives? What is, what's your motivation?
Yeah, I'd give you-
Sure. Pop-up. So one of the-
Would you identify yourself?
Oh, what's that? Oh, to introduce myself, Katie Farick from LinkedIn Community Relations. Thank you for having us. And to answer that question, a couple of years ago, we began exploring ways to activate what will ultimately be a fee that we'd owe sooner, so that some of the challenges of affordable housing creation can be overcome by activating that capital into the market now, rather than when our fee would be available, and then when the city decided to create a NOFA, and then, you know, so it's like this multi-year delay. And so, associated with our earlier development proposal, we'd explored doing that with a particular nonprofit housing developer. And since that time, so that's still a potential as an option for you to consider. Another one, another opportunity that's come more recently is Housing Trust Silicon Valley has created a bond fund, or a loan mechanism, actually is more accurate, where, it's called the Tech Fund, and it doesn't mean technology companies, like, it just means any investor can, and actually, I believe they have some early investors already, and what that is, is it's basically a five- or 10-year low-interest loan that would activate that money into the affordable housing marketplace now, and that money would either be returned like a loan on, you know, 1.5% interest, or if it's accepted as the BMR fee, that could be turned over to the city as their asset at that point.
Okay.
But the problem it overcomes is time.
Okay. It sounds like you already have preconnections. So let's see, I have one more question here. Was the, oh, the land swap that was done to get the land for this project? I mean, originally, the Shoreline Commons project came with community benefits. What's the state of that now? Has that disappeared pending Google's intent for that project?
Yes, we're, I mean, we're anxiously waiting to hear from Google as to what they intend to do. But there's no transference of any of the things that they talked about there to this project. In terms of the benefits that they were talking about to get the gateway, that they, I mean, are you asking if they apply here?
Well, I'm wondering, I mean, like, I guess, one question would be, is Google still on the hook because they own the original property? Or did it come with the proposal, and now the proposal is gone? And therefore, you know, we're starting from ground zero in terms of negotiating that package again.
For the gateway side?
Yes.
You know, that's, because they've not returned to the city what they would, what they would like to do, at this time, we just don't know, you know, what, if the project may be different. I mean, I would imagine that the city's expectation would be the things that they were going to provide in form of the benefits for the bonus FAR would still be the same.
Okay.
But, you know, I suppose possibly they could offer something-
We don't have a, I mean, before, there was the idea of the pedestrian branch, the library contribution, and the, and the contribution to, and the project on Shoreline, the affordable housing project closer, that's not LinkedIn's thing anymore, right?
I mean, I don't quite understand your line of questioning, in relationship to this project?
No, I'm trying to understand, I mean, you know, whether or not, you know, just, just to know whether it's-
Are you asking of the project that LinkedIn proposed?
Yeah.
Originally? If any of those benefits will transfer through to Google when they develop the site?
I mean, would Google still obliged, regardless of how they redevelop the property, to find exactly those benefits?
Yeah, I mean, generally, I would say yes.
Uh-huh.
But, you know, given that there's a new property owner there, or controller and/or owner, you know, they may have new ideas, which they could bring to the city, and, you know, through our process of going to the council-
Okay.
And potential EPC as well, asking if that's still acceptable.
It's a fair answer. Thank you much. Okay, those are my next questions. I may have followers.
Thank you. Commissioner Moore?
Yes, I have a question that I don't know if this is for staff or the applicant. Where would the parking be for the 3,000 square foot ground floor retail space be? And what is envisioned as far as the occupant?
So I'll just jump in. So the retail space is proposed right here along Middlefield in this new office building. Staff, staff's primary interest would be for the parking to be as easily accessible as possible to that retail space, which would put it in this new garage proposed along Middlefield. But as part of this project, we would study exactly where that would be and how much parking would be available.
In the report, it references branding specialties over on Palace. There's a lot of, I go over there, run in, park my car, go get something and get back in my car and leave. So I guess I'm having trouble figuring out how that 3,000 square foot space is gonna be really utilized. Are you going to end up with a potential situation where somebody goes in, invests a bunch of money and nobody can utilize the space so business goes out of business?
I think a good question for the applicant might be what they're considering for the space or their thoughts on what the retail tenant may or may not be. Because at this point, it's hard to say. If it was a food use, then there might, there would be different parking considerations potentially than if it were a retail, typical retail tenant or service user, or service, I should say.
Sure. So frankly, we've thought about it as a bike shop. Something that would actually serve our employees to be something that would actually make it a little easier. Because if we try to get people to bike there, then if they have a place where they get their bike serviced, that might work out very well, which theoretically also means they shouldn't need a lot of parking, right? So that's kind of the, gets you a kind of a nice, a double, double hand on being able to do both at the same time. We have not put a lot of thought into it, to tell you the truth. I don't know whether we would think about doing any kind of food service or anything. There's not a lot of food service that would get supported well. I think that we're that, we're proposing that building, the traffic on Middlefield, I just, you know, we don't wanna cause problems with more traffic on Middlefield and people coming in and out of driveways and stuff. So I think we need to be careful about that. So, but yeah, I think it's a great question. We really haven't spent much time on it.
Because I'd hate to see people parking across Middlefield and the office buildings across and then running across.
Oh, yeah.
No, I think there's, there's great opportunity right here on the ground floor. If you come in and park right in this corner to access that retail space.
And then one of the other questions I had was a little bit of confusion on one of the slides that shows more of a road access paralleling alongside of the property. And then there's also reference to calling it a bicycle corridor. So it's on page A13, it says vehicular circulation. I don't know what this slide might be.
Yes, that is primarily a vehicle that serves these parking spaces. But the bike path would be on this side and the walk, the pedestrian path would be on the other side. That is the section we're working now with staff to have a section.
Some of these elevations perspective areas, it looks so wooded that I was trying to figure out was that accurate or not.
Yes, this section here, we've got almost 60 feet there. Road itself is only 26 feet. So we've got shoulders on both sides and the ask is for a 10 to 12-foot bike, bikeway and then a seven-foot walkway on the other side. That's what we're trying to do with the road down the middle. It serves for our fire truck access as well, as well as vehicle.
I think that you need to have fire access. And then as far as parking, does LinkedIn have an idea of how many employees? If you look at a million square feet and you have average 250 square feet per employee, that comes out to about 4,300 employees. If you have 2,900 parking spaces, then that would mean that technically three-fourths of the, or two-thirds of the employees would be able to park on site. So how does that correlate with the transit demand management system or doesn't, it just doesn't seem like there's, when you look at how many parking spaces potentially there are, it doesn't seem like there's that much of an incentive if only one-third of your people will not have access to a parking space.
Maybe, maybe the best, so, so we think about it as we, we certainly would have a TDM to manage parking. We do manage parking actively in the buildings in Sunnyvale anyway. We are getting about, what was the number we calculated?
We actually occupy it.
Forty percentish.
Five per 1,000.
Yeah.
And so this is parked at just under 61% with about 3,000 parking spaces compared to capacity of 5,000 employees.
We typically occupy five per thousand and then there's service employees as well. So, so I don't wanna say that there's, that's the number. We try to avoid the getting people to not drive, right? So the only way to get them to not drive is to bless them, to get them to bike or to get them to walk. Not a lot of walk to this site unless you happen to live in that one, one part of Sunnyvale right behind it, or maybe if you live over in the, in the Snail neighborhood on the other side of the town. So it will be a good bike place for a lot of people, so we wanna enhance that as much as we can. We are already a member of the Mountain View TMA, even though we're not in Mountain View. So we joined that years ago. And we do consistently try to do everything we can do to get people out of their cars. We know that as an employer, that's something that we have to do and we have to figure out the right way.
And as far as the removal of heritage trees, it seemed like it was just talked about taking it and placing. So are there any trees that can be utilized, saved, moved, repurposed?
Yeah.
And are those figured in?
So as part of the project, they, the applicant has identified preliminarily in the plan set, some trees that are sizable in nature and mature in nature and healthy to be retained and primarily are not proposing to remove those. There are, I would say, a mix of health in terms of the trees on the site. Some of them are in pretty poor health and poor structure and in fact, some of them, I think, recently fell over in some of the storms. But there are a lot of trees that are, you know, worth definitely pursuing in preservation. As part of the application process, we will look at the trees in more detail in terms of their health and structure and also as part of the process, look at trees that may be candidates for relocation if feasible or more candidates for retention. All right, so another commissioner has asked questions.
All right, so who's the next commissioner who would like to ask some questions? Let me shake a applause.
Just, just a couple of questions. Have you looked in a little more detail about any, a little different design and placement of the parking garage one in the building three to kind of accommodate that closeness to the streets? Is there any possibility? I, I can see it's a very unusual layout parcel and so it's, it's easier said than done. But just out of all your considerations, did you think about that, those particular designs?
Yes, let, let me tell you how we arrived at this. And these are the pinch points at building one and at the parking, building three and parking structure. I know we can deal with this corner. We can easily cut this back, you know, and deal with it. You notice we, we tried to step the parking structure down too. These are three-story.
Right.
Lower than that, the level, so it steps down to the street. But I know we can deal with that. We really came up with this situation. We have the existing building.
Yes.
By code, we need 40 feet of separation between the new building and the old building so we don't have to fire shut or put protection on the new building so we can have glass.
Right.
So that's at this, this location. And then the, the point that is 20 feet is our wider base, okay? Not the upper portion. The upper portion is further back, like 35 feet. So where we're pinching is the lower two-story base. I know we can manipulate that and carve that and maybe look at the angle of this. So we are prepared to look at this corner. What we felt though, the original zoning guideline said 30 feet average, 20 feet minimum. Of course, we took the 20 feet minimum. But it only occurs, only occurs for this length. And really, if you know this corner, this is almost like an on-ramp for the freeway here. So we felt really anchoring this corner and coming out, because right now, it's kind of a no man's land here. You don't see anything. That bringing the building out wasn't necessarily a negative and we stepped it down. And we felt another issue LinkedIn identified is this portion here, which is Caltrans property?
Yes.
We'd like to try to control that and landscape that. So really, the buffer is that dimension in terms of visual access, even though the walkway. But we still need to, to make the cycle track and the pedestrian walk work along that edge and salvage as many trees as we can.
Yeah, because I was wondering what the feasibility of that, you know, pedestrian and cycle track, you know, area, how would that, how would that be?
I think we have a fighting chance.
How would that be impacted? Because it is very close to the freeway, but bikes are gonna try to find the most efficient way to, you know, travel and we wanna make it as safe as possible.
Right.
So that's, that's.
Now, that's a priority. We wanna make that cycle track work and, and then look at how the building adjusts. I mean, we haven't discussed this at all, how, you know, how much more narrow we can get on the building there.
Right.
Well, I think at this stage of our design, we're still open to possibly looking at that. But that's why we thought it wasn't necessarily, and it only occurs right here. And the portion that's pinching you at 20 feet is the two-story portion.
Correct.
Once you get up above the two-story, it steps way back.
Okay.
And this, these are more like 60 to 70 feet back. So really, the pinch point is really at the entry here. But then my, my argument was we throw this piece in here and you've got this appearance of not the canyon experience and this wider experience.
Exactly, exactly. And regarding the parking garages, just where they're located, are you just counting on the trees and the landscaping kind of being that buffer there for, for both of these garages? Or have you considered any type of.
Yes.
Artistic design outside? Because I, you know, I've seen parking garages. I'm sorry that we have to have them.
We're hopeful for this one.
But they are, but they are what they are.
Can you, I've got an exhibit that shows what we're, what we're thinking of.
Okay.
Can we go to my appendix? The appendix, you go to the appendix, there's a couple of vignettes of the parking.
PowerPoint?
Yeah, in the PowerPoint. If you go, yes, scroll down, scroll down. These are all in your package right here. This, this one, 42 and 43. So what we're hoping to do in terms of animating this, this elevation, this is the long parking structure.
Right.
Is rather than plant down below and hoping the vines grow up, we're introducing planters up high so that the plants can start, the vines can start to grow. We've introduced these heavy blue lamb timbers. So we're kind of, it's a metaphor, it's, it's like a tree, another tree layered onto the parking structure. These are the planter boxes and then this is an exposed exterior stair on the back campus side that helps activate that. So rather than people going to the corner and going downstairs, we're bringing them to the front. But on the other side, we do have a number of features that we're in discussions with staff now. Now, the lower level there, the first two levels, we kept fairly open and transparent. We think security-wise and making the space, that back road feel secure. The more eyes that see it and you're seen, the more transparency is better rather than hiding so people can lurk behind the screens. And we want some natural ventilation. But the idea is to use this, the third portion is this metal panel system as kind of a, we're trying to emulate tree bark and try to get shadows and try to create this more, this panelized system. It still allows perforation and air movement, but it's a series of metal panels that are different earth tones and that kind of texture. So that is what we're working on, the components of the stair, the planter, the per, the panel and then our, our tree kind of features with heavy timbers that might suggest more of organic screening rather than just putting, you know, green screens. And we like to compose it so there's something to look at.
Thank you, thank you very much. I just, on my question to him.
I do wanna just point out one thing about this parking garage. So this is the parking garage along MOD or closest to MOD, the long one. It's this portion of the garage that's adjacent to residential. So it's not the entire length of it that's adjacent to residential, which is.
Right, okay.
Can you go to the next slide? The next slide shows, there's another blow-up slide. Yeah, those are the per pan, panels. We have a vignette of the, yeah, here are the panels. This is a blow-up of how the timbers, the, the green screen.
Okay.
And then the panels would work. So it's that composition with the stairwells and the, the planter boxes and the metal.
This is not in our handout, right?
I thought it was.
I didn't, yeah, yeah. This one's not in our handout. That's okay, that was.
Yeah, we had a condensed version for you in the made, in the big handout. It's.
No, that's, that's perfectly fine. It's nice to see this, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but this one should have, but that's the, that's the idea of treatment.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Vice Commissioner.
Hey, Larry. And so I guess I have a couple of questions on the cycle track. Is there early conversation about access point from the Sunnyvale neighborhood onto the cycle track? You know, we, I met with Katie and talked about this, but I guess one of, even though they're not our residents, they're our neighbors.
Yeah, so, so this was just played out here. So this is 100% private property from MOD to Middlefield, right? So none of which LinkedIn controls in any way, meter form. Their apartments and their condos, depending on which you are. The, the public roads stop here and then there's, there's actually not one there. So that's the last public road, so this is private. We will talk to these condo associations, we'll talk to them, see if we can put in a gate in here, have no problem. In fact, we want to do that because it would allow our employees to actually go through the park and come in. But we have no guarantee that they will allow us to do that. In the end, we can't control it. We're also discussing with Synopsys, used to have a gate right here. You can actually see their sidewalk that's in it. Synopsys doesn't own that site, they lease it and then they own the one next door. So we've had a continuing conversation with them about could we, could we utilize that? Really, why that, why we've been trying to do that is actually to, to stop one of the issues that one of the residents brought up in the letter that I think they sent you was they see LinkedIn bikes going the wrong way on the street. We've been trying to stop that too with a lot of employee education and doing things to get people to understand you're not supposed to be riding on sidewalks and you're not supposed to be riding the wrong way on the street. The problem with most people is they're not going to cross MOD, ride down MOD and cross again when they only gotta ride about 60 feet. So we're trying to find a solution that solves it. We think, you know, I think with the right inducement, maybe these guys will, but there's no guarantee because again, it's private ownership and, and it's in a different city and it's, you know, all that kinds of stuff. But we would love to be able to, to open it up. Now, opening it up actually is a benefit to these residents because if we can open it up, they can get through the site and they can get to the VTA better. In fact, it would be the, the most efficient way they can get to the VTA. The guys that used to be the tenant of this building, used to cut through back here somewhere. There's a gate back here and they used to cut and go and there's a little retail center that's, that's on, on Mary down there and they would go to that retail center. I went and followed them one day to see how they went in. It, you know, it's, you really are cutting through somebody's backyard for all intents and purposes. So, you know, we have to do it in the right way by asking the neighbors and hopefully that's something they will want. If, if I were them, I would like it. On the other hand, they may be totally concerned with a whole bunch of office people riding bikes and stuff through their, their backyard. So don't know how they'll react to it, but we'll certainly ask.
And while I have you here, a couple of related questions. So I know it's very early on, but have any of the private property owners along that order shared their feedback about the setback for the parking garages?
We only have the one letter, right, from?
Just the one, okay.
From, yeah. So I, yeah, so, no, no.
No, just, if we're being asked, it would be, if there's any. And then, so looking forward, I saw on the map with LinkedIn's holdings further in Sunnyvale. Can you tell us a little bit more about whether LinkedIn plans to continue?
Fine.
Using this in the feature and what the connection might look like?
Yeah, Sarah, okay. So the, all the buildings in blue are LinkedIn-occupied buildings. We own and lease some of those. The concept has been with this campus is that we will continue to migrate this way and move, move basically the teams along MOD down to this campus. So the idea would be actually over time is actually move out of a lot of these buildings if we could and have them all together. We really want more people together as tight as we possibly can have. We don't know whether that's actually feasible in the long run because we don't know quite how fast we're gonna grow. But we're assuming that right now that we will actually get a vast majority of kind of the folks along MOD. So the concept will be, these three buildings that are up here, we already have plans to vacate the summer as that campus opens. And so we're starting that merge down this end.
So roughly how many employees?
So this campus will hold about 5,000 employees. We're gonna move about 1,200 this, well, it's probably in May, actually, May to June, about 1,200 into it. That are all coming out of, a lot of them out of this building. They're, you know, they're coming out, they're scattered from all where they're coming out, but they will be moving down. What we're trying to do is we're trying to get our R and D teams together so that we can actually.
And then just one more question is about the tech fund. And I'm wondering, have there been any projects that are currently underway or how?
Oh, sure.
How soon could we maybe see something?
Yeah, that's a good question. Kevin's Wick is the executive director of the Housing Trust Silicon Valley. And he's intimately familiar with this. It's a new fund, they're just starting to get money in. So they don't have a project they can point to yet, but they do have commitments from a couple of different companies or organizations in this area. One of which they've been able to announce publicly, Cisco's invested. So hopefully they'll have some projects to be able to report on investing on. And then actually specific to this, as we were exploring it, having conversations. They're more of a county-wide organization and they would be able to dedicate funds that we would loan to Mountain View projects. So that it wouldn't just be somewhere in Santa Clara that we would expect to, you know, have credit for. It would have to be a Mountain View affordable housing project.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you. And then just two quick questions for staff. One, the staff department mentioned feature availability of recycled water. Well, that, I know it's already piped, is that right? Can you help me understand?
Yeah, so the three existing buildings on the site are plumbed, dual-plumbed to connect at a future date.
But they're not currently using it, they just have the capacity.
They're not currently using it. Right now, the East Wisman area is not currently served by recycled water. Sunnyvale next door does have recycled water. So as part of, there has been feasibility studies that have been done with the city. And at this point in time, further studies have to be done to kind of talk about the design and implementation of that.
In partnership with Sunnyvale?
It would likely have to, well, part of what the study looks at is whether it should come from Sunnyvale or whether it would be a connection in the North Bay Shore within existing city limits. So that would be what gets studied further.
Okay, and then my last question is about the grade crossing under Caltrain. Is there any possibility that that grade crossing could be tunnelled under Central Expressway as well? I know Sunnyvale probably isn't looking at that design, but is a potential community benefit for?
Yes.
Is that under county jurisdiction or something?
So, yeah, there's a couple of agencies that are involved crossing this segment of Bernardo. I mean, ultimately, the intent is to connect the southern part of Bernardo down here to the northern part of Bernardo. So the tunneling right now, just rough figure, it's about 250 feet. That Sunnyvale's looking at going under the tracks and popping back up. That's a relatively good distance that you wouldn't want to necessarily extend even further. Because as you can guess, a dark tunnel is not exactly a desirable way to cross. So however, we have had conversations with the city of Sunnyvale about making sure that as they go through the design details of that project, that they allow for flexibility that in the future so the city of Mountain View want to tap into the edge of that tunnel, that there could be that potential.
And this might be a question that is totally unrelated. With that flexibility, could we see a potential overpass similar to the Stevens Court Trail? I just don't know if you go down and then you pop back up, if you have enough grade to make that crossing.
And I think because Sunnyvale doesn't have the design details yet, it's hard to know the footprint of what that crossing is ultimately going to be designed as. But as part of the community benefit kind of on the table here, is looking and studying different alternatives of how it might be able to happen. Whether it's above grade, at grade, looking at below grade maybe.
Okay.
Commissioner.
Great, thank you. Can you activate a bike path access link? So my question there, I don't know if staff know or the applicant would be speaking. So for the two-way cycle tracks on the, right there, and then the back of the project, those are, would be public access, right? And then for the kind of points in the middle, those would be just for employees? Or is the idea that, I guess, how solid are those?
So the interest.
All those arrows and dots and lines?
Yeah, the interest is to have all four of these arrows shown to be publicly accessible. So the purple arrow shown in the middle, the exact route, you know, hasn't been figured out or hasn't been studied frankly. But the interest is really to allow members of the public to be able to cut through the site.
Okay. And then my question is for the community benefit section. Has there been any discussion about community benefit in terms of improvements for under 237 and along the Middlefield? My idea would be that if I were taking public transit from the Middlefield Station, I know that a lot of the traffic pushes onto MOD right now because that's where a lot of the buildings are. But, you know, the hope would be, especially if there's going to be a public open space on the Middlefield side, that we would want to make it as friendly and accessible to walk under 237 from Middlefield, which is, you know, I live along Middlefield. That's the way I come on my bike. And I don't know if that's been in any discussion in terms of a potential, another potential community benefit. I don't know if that's something the applicant would be willing to discuss.
I mean, I think a couple of things. So for the precise plan process for East Wisman, the city will be looking irrespective of this project, at these underpasses as well as the underpass under 101 into NASA Ames. So it will be looked at, the situation, the existing conditions between this MOD underpass and the Middlefield underpass are drastically different.
In terms of the conflict points?
In terms of the conflict points, in terms of the potential amount of improvements or infrastructure that would need to be either constructed or removed or modified. In terms of this project, I think, you know, the applicant has shown a keen interest in connecting along kind of this MOD underpass. Since it is an area that frankly, the city hasn't really done extensive studies on and arguably needs probably the most amount of improvements. There are interim bike lane improvements that are actually in design right now with our Public Works Department and are hopefully going to be implemented in the fall of this year, which will include improvements for bike lanes on the Middlefield Boulevard, including under the underpass.
Wouldn't, so the siding of the Bernardo Avenue undercrossing, doesn't that fall within city of Sunnyvale limits though?
So the proposed undercrossing is in the city of Sunnyvale, how do I explain this? So that intersection.
Yeah, I know we all.
Yeah, the intersection is actually.
Is it right on the line?
Yeah, it's right on the city limit line. So half of the street effectively is in the city of Mountain View and half of the street is in the city of Sunnyvale. Sunnyvale, however, owns all of the signalizing at this intersection. So this project will likely require them to do some work within the city of Mountain View right of way to make this happen. And then, of course, Caltrain right of way is not owned by either city. And then Central Expressway, of course, is the county. So I think in terms of this benefit on the table, it's really looking at the county right of way potentially and crossing that in some manner into the city limits, north side.
Has there been any discussion or like engagement with the county on that at this point?
So the county is aware of Sunnyvale's project. And as part of that project, as they go through the design details, they will have to, you know, get proper permits from the county roadways as well as the railroad to do the undercrossing there. So those agencies would all be involved.
Got it, great. And then my last question is about the open area. And I guess this might go towards the applicant. So in looking at the open area and the open space, has there been any kind of idea of trying to? The greenery is nice, has there been any kind of thought process on some sort of place-making and making it inviting? I know Commissioner Cox talked a little bit about activating it in terms of maybe residents using it to have recreational uses on the weekend. I don't know if the applicants thought about how to, how to create or if that's even an idea or if there could be art there or I don't know if that's even a thought process that's happening right now for the open space.
We thought about it a little bit, we hadn't spent much time on it because we didn't know how or whether it would be able to be advised. This is, this is the farthest remote corner of Mountain View, so we really didn't know how you guys would actually feel about it. I think there is a, there's a slide in the appendix that shows.
Yeah, there's a, there's a couple of slides in the appendix there.
No, it's in there.
Yeah.
It shows something, areas of program, element, yeah. Well, first of all, just the scale, yeah. You can cycle through some of these starting. The scale, this is about four acres.
Right.
And you guys know the North Bay Shore, Charleston Park is five acres. About width, that space is fairly large. The reason we just, we capitalize on extending the network from the center here so we can get some kind of continuous walkways. But we felt these zones created the opportunity for different activities. You go to the next slides, there's, you know, our shuttle stop for one is a major focus there. But the other areas, we've seen, let's go to the next one, areas, and this is our landscape architect trying to evoke a feel for the scale and the trees and the kind of areas we can have. Where it's just, there might be some more seat site furnishing and benching. So it could be a weekend place just to stop or where you walk your dog or whatever. But go to, I think we had a couple more slides. Do we have it? Yeah. The food truck kind of ideas, and this is where food trucks line up along those walks that can organize, you know, circulation. But we really kept it fairly generic at this time. You know, we do have on the north side, kind of just an open grassy area, more of an active sports field that is open to the public also. We consciously place these at the perimeter so community access, you don't have to go to the center of the site to access it. What we loved about this space, it's right at the edge of the property and it's a natural flow in from the public street.
I do want to mention something real quick. So the current design shows kind of the primary entrance to the site would be essentially an extension from Bernardo Avenue. And then this kind of loop and then this driveway access, LinkedIn has kind of initially proposed as their primary shuttle stop and then shuttle exiting. I think if there is an interest and directions given from EPC and council to consider this community benefit, it is really city staff's interest that if this is going to serve kind of a multipurpose function, that maybe this design of vehicle circulations and shuttle circulation, we look at alternative designs. Because if this is going to serve multiple functions, we want to make sure it's designed appropriately to have that flexibility. This may not be ultimately that's designed to have that flexibility.
In terms of like vehicular traffic?
Right, and then also ensuring pedestrians, you know, are safe and have access as well. And then, of course, looking and studying the potential of maybe having this be a little bit more of a public transit stop for multiple shuttles or bus types.
Is the applicant open to that?
What, sorry, what was your question?
I was like, is the applicant open to that?
So we're not closed, it's certainly something we will discuss. Again, this is the farthest reach of the amount of view, so I'm not so sure what real benefit it's going to be until.
So they can go to the food trucks.
Yeah, yeah, no. So it, when you think about it, just where it is, it's not, there's not a lot of realistic. I don't think we're going to get a lot of walk pies and I don't, I was just trying to be very practical about it. But it's certainly something we would consider and think about. Yeah, don't have any real problem, I just don't want to find us with 15 Google buses lined up.
And no one in. Yeah, understood, great, thank you.
All right, well, I have a couple of questions. On the tree canopy, do you know what the existing tree canopy is and what the tree canopy is, will be, the proposed setup?
A staff question that's opposed to us.
So at this stage in the process, we don't have that information yet. But it would be something we would gain as part of the review process. And when we return to EPC, this project, we would have that information.
Would it be fair to say that given what we see here, it would be an increase in tree canopy?
Yes, it would be a significant increase because the area is going essentially from, you know, 30 to 35%. Sorry, what am I trying to say? It's more than doubling basically the landscape thing, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. On the east road there, what is the design speed or what do you envision the design speed for automobiles?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. One of us, we were talking, this is literally four tenths of a mile from one end to the other. So it is quite a, quite a distance. We introduced this little wiggle here too to try to slow down vehicles. We're investigating paving textures. We don't want to just put speed bumps in there because of the bikes too. And so that is a study we're doing because we don't want this to become a drag strip either. So I think the idea is to create, you know, some natural speed calming sleeves there. It might just be cobbles, you know, that really slow people down. But that is a notion. But, you know, one of the big attributes, it's a mile walk all the way around. We actually have walking paths that are a half mile, three quarters of a mile. You know, you know the story, LinkedIn loves to have one-on-one meetings walking. So we really tried to capitalize on that. But we do have some work to do there to kind of control that speed.
Okay, but do you have an idea of what speed you're going to aim for? Would it be 15 miles an hour, 25 miles an hour?
Yeah, I'd have to.
I have no idea.
Yeah, I think the idea is you could load this parking space right here, this building, this garage, and exit right away here. So we're kind of thinking there's not that much traffic going back and forth. What we like is you can enter these parking spaces at different points along this area. Hopefully, it's not people cutting all the way through. I mean, as it is, you know, this is a tough exit here. You're not supposed to make a left turn here if people do, so it's a right out only. We provided this internal road, so if someone wanted to go left onto MOD, you'd come out here and then make the left turn. That's why that road, besides service. The other idea is that we got rid, we eliminated one driveway right here. There used to be another driveway that created that problem there. So we eliminated it and informed people to this point. So we're trying to address the traffic issues here. But I would say the idea that, you know, the traffic patterns are here and traffic patterns are here and now.
So does our, be not have people going that four tenths of a mile in their automobile?
Zero.
The desire you'd have is to have people use either the north or the, either Middlefield or MOD?
In my mind, that's the way I would think the most efficient driving cars, you know, from point A to point B is not driving this whole length of this half mile to get out. But, you know, who knows? If people take the easiest way out and this is backed up here, backed up here, they'll be going down here. But depends on which direct, you know, which direction you're going. If you're going to make a right, it is easy to go down there. But you're right, there is, there is a need to study this control situation.
And just to give you a framework, typically. And just to give you a framework, typically onsite drive aisles, like shopping centers and things, 10 to 15 miles per hour is usually the max.
All right. So was that considered within the idea of co-mingling the vehicles and the bicycles in addition to considering the cycle track separately?
So I think staff's interest is for the cycle track to be at a different grade level than the, on the drive aisle to provide the most maximum safety and buffering to allow more free movement of the bikes.
Okay. Sounds like it would be more of a bike path in a way.
Separated from the road.
Yeah, we refer to them as cycle tracks, but yes, it would be.
Yeah, I'm pretty familiar. So would it be a class four cycle track or more of a class one bike path?
I think staff's interest and we'll see, you know, ultimately with further review of the actual design specifics. But the interest would be for a class four.
And I was wondering if the applicant had done any studies on the air quality or, I guess, even staff? Have there been studies on air quality from parking garages on nearby residents?
So that, so air quality analysis will be done for the proposed project as part of the environmental review process. So it will take into account the air quality impacts, not only of the garages, but all operations and functions of the project. So that process has not started. So we don't have the information at this point in time, but we'll have it when we return to EPC.
I have a question. So Commissioner Cox.
Just one quick follow-up. In addition to your discussions with trying to get the access to the private property, just as good neighbors were, you thought your thoughts to do a community outreach to, as an informational perspective, to the Sunnyvale residents so they know what's going on?
Yes, thanks. We are planning on doing at least one, if not more, community open houses for anyone in the neighborhood or general public to kind of see the model and other design elements.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Two short ones. So I'm just trying to do an apples-to-apples comparison here. So on the Samsung project, I believe that was a 1.0 FAR? And did that include the parking garages?
No.
Okay. And then last question. So that's full of otaggs on top of the parking garages?
Yes.
What's on top of the buildings?
Okay. What's interesting is we always knew that the views from this building, looking down on this building would be an issue. We have a couple of ideas that we've been banding about with LinkedIn. What we were hoping originally, you know, you remember how tall these trees are here? That it was almost being up in the trees. Hoping to utilize these roof plates. These are 50,000 square foot roof plates. They're huge. We did connect at the second floor and we've got roof terraces on the new building. But the views down onto the building, we've got a couple of slides, I think, from the early slides, that showed some kind of treatment there from planting. Just, we can only afford minimum weight, additional weight on it. But we want to reduce the glare and reflection from these white roofs up. We want to see green. And we gave, there is, I'm sorry, there was an earlier rendering where we had rooftop elements. But we had some elements that, you know, again, bringing nature up there and green screens and things that were, and we wanted it to be more three-dimensional. They're almost like vine rows that were up there.
But you have.
There was another option of painting the roofs green.
Okay. But you're at least looking at some kind of green roof recovery and stuff like that?
Yes. Yes.
I think that's a plus. Okay. That's what I want to know.
Are there any more questions from the commission? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to open this up for public comments. So you can make any comments that you'd like on this project. And you'll have three minutes to do so. Do we have any interest in speaking at this point?
Good evening, 10:11, friends of Caltrain. And I'll be really quick on this. So a few comments relating to transportation. And one is with regard to the TDM goal and the 20% reduction, which it sounds like Sam Trans, not Sam, Samsung, may already be beating. And LinkedIn is already, I think, doing a little bit better than that in its own campus already and had some really ambitious plans for the other locations. So I would like, I think it would be really welcome for the city to work with LinkedIn and see whether it might be possible to do better than that and potentially add a trade-off if they don't need the car parking to utilize this space for other and better purposes. With regard to the bike amenities, would suggest bringing this in addition to the Mountain View and Sunnyvale BPACs, where there are people who are paying really close attention to connecting those bicycle networks. With regard to the bicycle connection and the Snail neighborhood, this is an issue that has been at issue in Sunnyvale, both with people that are advocates of pedestrian and bicycle access strongly in favor and also some residents who are quite nervous about having, you know, someone that they haven't met yet bicycling or walking through their neighborhood. So I strongly recommend outreach. And when there is outreach, I recommend reaching out to the BPAC and the neighborhood so you get a cross-section of representation, including people who value walking and biking and people who may be a little bit more nervous about that walking and biking. And then very lastly, about something that I think some staff members may now be aware of, actually relating to a seemingly very different topic with VTA, considering how to use Measure B funds for Caltrain grade separations. There is a, I think, unintended issue with the way that they are describing that language being very prescriptive about what kinds of designs could be used to be eligible for funding. And I think that there are some ideas in here that would have more creative options and would, you know, given the fact that there's even more creative options being thought of here to give that feedback into VTA to allow cost-effective and creative options to use that money to achieve the goals. And if anybody has any questions about that, I would be happy to follow up.
Hi, Commissioner Baird.
One more question. Just across in Sunnyvale, the Irvine Company is proposing to redevelop a huge amount of property and put in, I think it's 1.4 million square.
Actually, Commissioner Baird, could we hold your question until we hear, if we have no one else from the public, then?
You're right.
We can take that. So do we have anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Okay. So carry on, please.
So in case, not too far from here, I don't know if there's a map that we can look at.
So the Irvine project is proposed.
I think it's like right here.
Yeah, it's basically there and going back all the way to Elmenor, where that road turns. So Irvine has basically that entire block that they've been looking to develop. Plus, they own a lot of property on the side. They also have a lot of tenants in their own.
So how does that, how would that be ordered and integrated? Can it be suggested to them that they help pay for the study of Bernardo Crossing? What public benefits are they going to be requesting that maybe we need to know about so that we don't double-dip or miss something?
So the city of Sunnyvale, actually, this area where this project, that project is located in is within a specific plan for that, for the city of Sunnyvale. Within that specific plan, they do have their own structure, if you will, or tiering for community benefits. It's very different than what we, how we've structured, the city has structured our precise plans and our community benefits. Theirs is more of a prescriptive and optional structure. And most of their community benefits are oriented about, I'm sorry, about onsite amenities, providing publicly accessible open spaces. It's much more about onsite improvements, frankly. I think Mountain View's community benefit program in general, how it's been implemented or structured in our precise plans tend to require the benefits to have greater benefit for the area as a whole. And oftentimes may be improvements that aren't even near the project. And the improvements that we're talking about as part of this project potentially are not ones that are double-dipping with the city of Sunnyvale. Now, the Bernardo Crossing and frankly, the underpass improvements on Maud are both ones that, if pursued, would have to be coordinated extensively with the city of Sunnyvale since it does greatly impact their circulation as well.
I just want to point out that the time is already 8:45. And there's also another item after this, which could be quite lengthy. So my suggestion would be, if there were any more questions, that potentially go on to the questions themselves. And in the interest of, maybe we could use those drawpals to each one, if people have additional things they want to comment on, you can simply talk about it. But I just needed some suggestions because that could turn out to be a long night otherwise.
Okay. So do we have an agreement on that?
Yeah.
So on our first question, we have, should the applicant and staff study direct contribution alternatives for the project to meet the city's affordable housing ordinance requirements? Sally? Okay, that's unanimous?
Yes.
Our second question, we have two parts. Part A, are six-story buildings and five-level parking structure heights appropriate for the project? Do we believe so?
Yes.
Okay, that is also unanimous. And section, question two B, is a one-to-one height to setback ratio for parking structures along a shared residential property line and a minimum 100-foot building-to-building setback between office and residential buildings appropriate for the project?
Make one comment before. I really feel like this needs to be made in consultation with the residents in Sunnyvale. So at least for me, it's too early to say if this is appropriate just based on one letter from one resident.
Okay. Commissioner Ramirez.
So I agree. And the only thing I would add is if we're modifying the site, the proposal in any way, I would hope that we don't approach on the open space area. So whatever modifications are made, we want to maximize that area to the greatest extent possible. So I'm, you know, I'm comfortable with the proposal. But if alterations need to be made, then that's the one thing I want to be sure we protect.
Okay? And Commissioner Baird, next one.
Yeah, through the cross-section CC, the, it adds up to be 93 square, it's about 93 feet rather than 100 feet. So I don't know if there's something that can be addressed. I don't work for that with the parking structure or the office building. But section CC does show that it is less than 100 feet.
So either of these setbacks outlined or shown by staff in this staff report would require modifications of the existing site plan.
Yeah, I was just going to add that I think that this is the right place for staff to start a conversation with the neighborhood. And I ultimately think, I think it's a very reasonable proposal because of the experience with El Camino and also because it conforms to the expectations the city of Sunnyvale has set up.
Okay. So if I hear a, I'll try to say what I'm hearing, which is that we would like to have more community input on this before making a decision on that, at least for so far. However, it seems that this could be reasonable and we don't want to get rid of any of the open space.
Would that be a general consensus among the others?
So our next question is, should the applicant consider alternative designs for building three and parking one to increase setbacks from the public streets?
Yes.
This is the pinch thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So that is two, three, four, five, six, seven?
Yep.
And then similarly, when making the modifications, we don't want to approach on open space.
Okay. So I hear a theme coming up. Okay. Question number four, is a parking ratio of 2.7 spaces per 1,000 square feet of office area appropriate for this project or should an alternative parking ratio be considered? Who would be in favor of the 2.7 spaces?
Okay. I would want to explore the feasibility of reduced parking, particularly if we end up going with a more aggressive TDM program.
Okay. So potential reduced parking?
Yes, and I share that. And I also think that point was made about flexible use of the parking if there's some way that when we have less single occupancy vehicles and potentially autonomous, if there's some ability to convert if this is going to be a phased project with parking coming in, I think in two phases.
So are we going to take a straddle on 2.7 or below 2.7? Or where are we going with this? Because I'm not supportive of going below 2.7 at this point.
Okay.
I mean, because I've talked to, and I've talked to people from LinkedIn and stuff, I found out that this is a challenging place because its proximity to the freeway makes it a very inviting place for people to drive and go to. So I think they'll have a harder time doing it than some other locations will be. On the other hand, I'm encouraged by the news from Samsung that they were able to do it. But, I mean, this is already below the three spaces for 1,000 square feet, so I just don't want to push it further.
Okay.
Could I just make a quick comment on that? So we have spent a lot of time on, you know, overall. And as I said, we basically occupy the buildings at five people per 1,000 square feet. And we have service staff that's on top of that. We all know what that ratio of service staff is. And it's, sorry that I don't have that number reported on the conversation we're looking at and wanted in. I am concerned about a decrease in parking. And I am concerned because people will end up parking on the streets. And we saw it happen when we first moved into the 1,000-mod, 950-mod buildings. We had a lot of service staff that actually parked in the park behind until we could get them to understand, here's all the parking that you can park in. And then we started getting them in our buses and getting them to come and alter. So it's, you know, it's that fine edge of what's right or wrong, right? And I don't think we're any better at it now. Ideally, we would spend a whole lot less money building a whole lot less parking, you know, but the trade-off of that is it's going to be, it is going to do stuff to the public streets, both in Sunnyvale and Mountain View.
Is there the possibility for mechanized parking or stacking parking within the garage to?
To create, to increase it more. It means that parking garage will probably have to be hired, which of course is the bad trade-off then for the neighbors. So it's all a balance. We can certainly study.
That's all I would suggest, is just study the feasibility. And we may find that 2.7 is the appropriate.
So here, studying the feasibility of it, but not with a direction of higher or lower?
I would study reduced parking.
Okay. So reduced parking?
So we have, I think we have two commissioners that are interested in reducing the action. Correct? Two?
I would be interested in that as well.
Three? Okay. And then the others, 2.7 seems reasonable? Okay.
A question five, are staff identified pedestrian bicycle improvements for the project appropriate or alternative improvements desired? So do, I guess we'll take the second part of that first, are there alternative improvements that are desired, I believe Commissioner Kamay had one being the Middlefield and 237 undercrossing. Would you like to propose that as an alternative to be considered as well?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Just to clarify, would that be consideration for community benefit or kind of these onsite? Because the way this question is framed, there's a lot of onsite bikes.
So maybe a way to the community benefit part to do that, but yeah, that's my interest.
Okay, I do have a concern on the use of the cycle track on the east side there, because if the design speed and the actual speed of the vehicles is somewhere around 15 miles an hour, then it should be relatively safe for the bikes, people on bikes, people in cars to share the space. So if that does encroach on the buffer for the neighbors or the open space, then I think that would be an okay trade-off as long as the traffic calming was such that you could assure there wouldn't be, you know, too fast running through. We're not Netherlands, but I think people would be smart enough that they could watch out for bikes and such. But other than that, I'm in favor of the proposed improvements. So who, shall we take a vote on in favor of the proposed improvements? Okay, unanimous on that? And what is the EPC's prioritization of community benefits identified for the project? Or does EP have, or EPC have other suggestions for community benefits? So do we want to address other community benefits first, and then, yeah, I guess, do we have other community benefits? Commissioner Cox?
I just, beyond the ones that were suggested there, I mean, my main concern is that community benefits are directed toward the vision that we have for the east, east Wisman Precise Way. It will helping make it more bikeable, you know, providing, providing the whole community there. So I think that would be the overriding guideline that I would look at with regard to any community benefit posed.
Okay, Commissioner Hayler?
Just to follow up on that, I'm not sure if this is a community benefit, but LinkedIn has a lot of sway in, but I think that at-grade crossing at Central Expressway doesn't necessarily get us closer toward the bikability, pedestrian-friendly, or at least improving connectivity to Sunnyvale and Mountain View Caltrain. So to the extent that there can be an alternative to at-grade crossing at Central Expressway, I wouldn't strongly include that as a community benefit. You support?
Okay. Commissioner Baird?
Yes, my prioritization would be studying Bernardo Avenue Crossing, then MOD and the open space as number three.
Commissioner Cox?
Maybe a little bit of the other direction, I would put the open space, I'm intrigued by it. First I looked at it and I said, Mike, yeah, it's in a really strange place and who's going to get there? But then, you know, I talked to people from LinkedIn and they said like, I said, well, you can come there, and they said, well, you can use their parking, they might be able to use their parking garage. So I mean, I think it's, it's an initial, it's an initial stages of discussion and brainstorming with respect to this, but I mean, I'd really like to see it play out because I mean, there aren't going to be, I mean, we want to build residential in East Wisman, and, you know, I mean, and there's going, there's still a lot of dense office there, and, you know, I mean, there aren't going to be a lot of opportunities for a space like this when the place starts getting built out. So, so I guess I would, I would put that at the top of consideration. With respect to Bernardo, I think it's great if it could happen, but I think it's mostly Sunnyvale's issue, and the money should be 90% from them. And, you know, with MOD, I think that's important. So I guess I would go open MOD and then open.
Okay, Commissioner Cox?
And I would agree with Commissioner Cox, because I think it's very important that we look at the overall Wisman plan and the availability of any type of open space in that area, and I think that that is certainly the desirable sequence from my perspective. So open space and MOD and Bernardo.
However, I'd point out if Bernardo, the undercrossing on Bernardo does happen, some of the new housing that will have on the south side of Evelyn will now have a relatively close Mountain View Park. Commissioner Cuddy?
So I would like to add the Middlefield as a potential improvement along Middlefield for bike pedestrian as a potential community benefit. And I think if I were ranking the options, I would say MOD, open space, Middlefield, then Bernardo. I feel like, you know, living on Middlefield personally, I think that it's important that Middlefield doesn't get, get the shaft in this, because it is, you know, looking at the map, people will be able to walk both ways, especially once the site is activated. And while I understand that the conflict points are mostly on MOD, that's why I'm putting that first, I do think it's important, especially if we're going to have open space along Middlefield, that we have some, some improvements there. Probably beyond what is already going to be envisioned, or maybe, you know, just enhance what's already going to happen with the east, with east Wisman Precise Plan.
So yours is MOD, open space, Middlefield, Bernardo?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Ramirez?
I have still a different ordering, just to make sure we don't have consensus. In my mind, the traffic safety and mobility improvements are the most important, just because I think we can anticipate a significant increase in traffic in this area. And in particular, I think we want to encourage, you know, different, you know, we want to encourage mode shift, right? So we want increased usage of the light rail station, we want more biking and walking, so I would prioritize the MOD undercrossing first, and then the Middlefield proposal, and then Bernardo, only because that's likely to be a much longer-term project. And then, I'm, you know, I'm also intrigued by the open area proposal, but that, that strikes me as awfully speculative, because I'm, I'm not really sure what, what the neighborhood is going to look like, you know, programming is always very difficult, you know, you can't, you can't require people to go to, you know, to utilize the space that we would like them to, and then I'm not, I'm obviously not sure that, you know, a transit station is appropriate here, maybe appropriate elsewhere, I'm not really sure. And then my understanding is there's, there's a park in Sunnyvale that's not very far away. Is that- So if, if, I'm, I'm less certain of, that, that strikes me as lower in the list of priorities, and, you know, once we get the transportation stuff out of the way, then I think we can, we can explore that.
Okay.
And I share, Commissioner Ramirez will comment. At least you have two that are valid.
We have two sets of two, and then two sets of one, and then-
What sounds like it's, people sound like they're behind MOD as number one.
MOD probably has the highest average.
Yeah, so MOD comes up as number two for Commissioner Baird, number two for Commissioner Cox, number one for Commissioner Kamay and Ramirez, and, oh.
Haymire.
Meyer, yes.
Then you get to include yourself.
Yes, I do, I have so many choices. And I have an urge to actually pick one of these rather than come up with the one that I've-
You can make the difference now.
Tiebreaker.
Yes, I have, yeah, I think the mobility improvements are more important in the open space, so I would go with the Ramirez mix of MOD, Middlefield, Bernardo, and open space. Let's see, so I guess overall mobility has-
Safety.
Mobility, safety, has the five commissioners, or open space has two commissioners as the first option, with variations on which exact places to place the mobility and safety features.
All right.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's adjourned for five minutes, and you're adjourned.